The town.
You might wanna say for the record. What we just did, like it's just coming online.
Alright, for the record, now that we are. Being recorded. And that this recording can be available on the. Town website. The. Board has just adopted new policy. You take record the. Meeting and post that on the website. Alright, next agenda item is. Setting a date for the Willis Point Road Dock Actation. And I had some emails with Mr. Wong.
This is the agent.
And. Invited her meeting if she wanted to. But she's not here, so. Anything you you have.
That may be an assumption on. I don't know on the time that I've actually spoken with them. We could either one of us could be right.
Well, we'll. We'll see. But I also in that email I. Indicate to her that at the very least give us some dates when we might want to, or when they might want to go entertain our site.
Have we actually gotten an application?
Uh Gary has and. We don't have.
Yeah, we distributed the application, so you. John has it and the select board has it, so you have to schedule a hearing in the.
I don't remember seeing it, that's all.
Well. I think it's in the box here, right? Yeah, so I I don't. I don't have anything online for.
I have a whole procedure that I follow when I get one of these where I. Email all the parties, get the hearing schedule and get it in the newspaper instead of the. So if I get it, I'll pick that off unless. For me to do it, okay, someone else can do it, but. I have done it in the past.
Oh, that's just my graphic for you.
Yeah, yeah, you're no, no, it's good, it's good.
Sometimes I'm trying, sometimes I'm doing notes.
So we we didn't get a. Did you get a long try to copy or just?
I'm not a fan of.
Pictures, maps and all kinds of stuff here, so.
Might be good if we could give. Them to give us a digital copy, so it'd be easy to share with them, I haven't seen.
If not. Uh people do. You have a way to scan this stuff in or?
Yeah, I could send it around.
Alright, let me, let me ask.
Who who's normally responsible for scheduling and? Getting it to the papers and getting letters to abouters, do we have like a? In my mind, I thought it was me, but if it's not me. Like, it's just important to know who it is.
I think you've done it the best.
Yes, but I I didn't get the application, so I had no idea.
Yeah, I think the process would be we get the application and if we could get it online, then we'll send it to you. But we didn't get it online, we got it hard copy, so don't give this.
Yeah, I'll get it online, just as long as you remember to kick it.
How did we get it?
Oh, you got it, you got it as a hard copy package.
I'm just looking now, I think I do.
Because if you did that, which we. Save everybody a lot of trouble.
It was not non-line copy, it was just.
But it's it's certainly, you you usually we we come up to with a a schedule and and and. You you certainly helped, that makes it so much easier.
I don't, yeah, if somebody else wants to send the email and do the scheduling and then I just do the newspaper part, that's fine too. I just wanna make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks, because it's not clear who's. Who's actually doing it, but yes. I think maybe you guys schedule it now, me as part of it, but.
Yeah, we give you the day.
Separating the roles, and then once you know, you tell me and I'll kick off that whole process.
I think it's um construction of a float as well as like gazed over.
And we could uh to modify a recreation dock and construct a. Modify a recreation.
Doesn't have any information as to what they're even doing that.
Oh, this is a Wilson. So it's a place on the corner of Will's point, she's going in and turning left. Um so they had. If they've had a a dock there for ten years. So it it just that I'm dreaming the title, it says modify a recreational dock and construct a float. So that's the the hall out would definitely hit us because that's a. Effecting the shoreline zone. But if it's modifying existing dock, then.
Alright, well. I've sent the email, made the request. You still don't have times. The clock is ticking on the application, we can see if it's if it's. Uh I don't know, there's a hard requirement. Which requires creating a space from the beginning of the site, because it's hard for us to do anything. Schedule anything without those, so. I'm suggesting maybe we leave at this time if we don't get it. Because otherwise we're up against a deadline for. Addressing their. Standby. April, I expect I'll hear something if not tonight, I might tomorrow. So if their digital copy and safety. Standing it, they'll do that.
Dick, what's the date on?
Okay.
So you'll be in touch to be. Fly catcher.
Yes, yes, I will, I'll take care of.
It is just just to give flavor where we all are for the next couple of weeks in terms of what's feasible. Alright, cuz I won't be around after September first, I'll be doing our couple of weeks.
Weekends are are fresh for me.
I'm gone from up uh August twenty first until September.
Just the fifth.
Next week, next.
So. Our folks. Uh our weekends available for folks or?
Could be. Yeah. We try and cancel. Labor Day weekend.
Next, at our next meeting. Right now, we're scheduled to address their application at our next meeting, which means we have to site.
We have to have the site visit between now and the our our September meeting.
Stay tuned, we'll hear from.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mizwado. Alright. It was an email regarding.
It's a big one.
Alright, April, if you wanna leave that up.
Yes.
Okay.
So this. Came up, actually, the history goes back to a year and a half ago when we added footings. To the building ordinance that it would be a footing check. And select board at that time said. Hey, can you come up with a new building permit? Uh form that adds the footings check. And you know, just also revisit the form, clean it up, whatever, it's kind of like property form, so. I said, sure, and I did it. And I think I brought it to the select board, brought it to Gary, and then institutional inertia set in, and then we never like. Did whatever had to, we had to do to bring it home. Um so I was kind of coming back to that and being like, wait a minute, what happened here? We gotta finish this thing. We also, I also had it on my list to do a driveway permit application. Do you need one of those? So I sort of. Went into overdrive and was like, let's just look at the whole darn thing, right? Um because, you know. I've also been reading through the ordinances a lot as we did all those amendments. And comparing the building and shoreline zoning ordinances, just to see what the similarities and differences are. And um. You know, it just occurred to me. As a resident, I had no idea. You needed a permit. For anything other than like building a house, putting in a subject tank. I didn't know you needed a permit for a shed. I didn't know you needed a permit for.
Over two hundred square feet.
Yeah, there is, yes, yes. Um and as town clerk, I didn't even really know, I knew a little bit more. But now that I'm on the planning board, I'm like, oh, wow, look at all these things, I'm looking at the table of land uses, there's so many things you need permits for. But the only form we have is building. Well, we have a pier. Or two, so at least we have that covered, buildings and pier, perhaps. Um but if we're gonna add the driveway permit and we're gonna fix the building for building permit form, I just felt like it was the time to sort of think about. Well, we have all these other things we need permits for. Should we make? There's two directions we could go, and I sort of threw together. Two examples for you. Um and also based on a conversation with Gary, who's like, ah, so many forms. We could do one unified land use permit form. However. The trick there is. Looking at your current building form, you use it as like your own checklist, right, to kind of record. All the information you need, and then there's like the office use portion. And that is the permit, I think, right?
Well, it is, except for the park, and it's posted on the job site.
So a unified form is not gonna be as useful to you because it has to be vague. And it's not gonna have. Everything specific to buildings. And then if we were gonna expand and do everything specific to tree removal, everything specific to putting in a driveway. Um you can't really do it on a single form. So I'll pass this around, I think there's one for everybody, but this is the unified form example. Um you know, obviously, these are just rough drafts, and I'm. In the sort of brainstorming. For phase here. There should be enough for Gary too. Um just like glancing over this quickly, you know, contact information, you can see the E nine one one address. Um I put in some detail there to sort of capture the fact now that you need a driveway. Then you need an E nine one one address, then you get all other permits, so I wanted to sort of. Guide people um when they get to that point. Um just breaking down between those three different categories, residential, commercial versus institutional. And then the, I think, what I think are the six basic categories. Of what we permit, so. I kind of made these categories up, right, I looked at the table of land uses, I looked at the land use section, the building code or the land standards. And there's much more than six, but I think I was just trying to come up with. You know, so driveway kind of has to be distinct, because that's an initial step where anything else can happen. Um tree removal is distinct in my mind, you know, you're. You put in your driveway and probably the next thing you do is take down trees. Um when you take down trees to put in your driveway, that's part of the driveway permit. But I I'm kind of thinking in order of what you do, right, you put in your driveway, get the permit for that, put that in. Now you're gonna wanna clear an area, so you're gonna need tree removal, and there's all kinds of specific rules around tree removal. Then you're gonna probably wanna grade or dig a hole for a cellar. That's where the earth moving filling comes in, and you're gonna wanna build, get to our regular building permit. Um utility installation and a little like, I don't know. On um there is a whole section in. The building code about utility installation, if you're just getting hooked up from the. Existing poles and wires. You don't need a permit. If you're having additional holes being put in, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, or you're putting in a propane tank, which is something that. Fire department needs to know about. Digging a well, or is that? That's uh the other. Oh, no permit for a well at all.
Yeah, it's just. Yeah, private food.
Interesting. So.
For now.
I'm not sure, yeah, I was. So I hope it's a big enough bucket to justify its own form, but it is a little distinct, and there is a huge section on wind power. So that might fall in that bucket too.
How about sanitation? Because you you need a. A permit from the L L S, whatever it is.
I didn't put plumbing on here. Because it's a whole, it's a separate. It's a, it's not land use, it's different. It's not in the building code or shoreline zoning ordinance. Is it?
It's more of a state.
We don't have anything in our order, so you should be guarding. Sanit, I mean, we have the distance, you know, we talked about.
In other words, yeah, everything that Gary does as an L P I is at the state level.
And then the last bucket is establishing a business, so. This would kind of get people started on the business permit. And then maybe site plan review if it's required.
That is really, it in and of itself is not a language.
It is in the sense that it's in our building code, AKA. Land use ordinance, and it is based, I think, what the. What the town regulates is. Land use, right, so. The home occupation section is in our building code ordinance under the land use standards, because I think it's about. Using our land for something. Is that? Am I? Is that right?
That's sort of the definition. But yeah, there's. Well, there's certainly land uses that require permit lands. Now, it's like when you get into the tree clearing, they should. I mean, you don't need, you don't need permit to cut down trees on twenty five percent of your lawn. But the minute you start digging stuff out and serving there, then you need a permit.
Right.
Because now you have to look at erosion. As a, as a, and a loud use. You can, you can clear only five percent of the area.
Yeah, there's. As long as you act within them. Some things you can just do and you don't need a permit, and some things, even if you're acting within the law, you still need a permit.
Well, once you get to a certain point. You might, it might trigger them.
Yeah.
And that may be where some people are getting a bit lost, it's like the issue of uh. Of driveway entrances. They went in there with no intention of developing a building, but we just sort of cleaned up the land. And uh get an access in there and sort things out. And in the process of that. You know, if you start scraping rocks away and moving dirt, and you get to that ten cubic yard threshold, technically, you need a permit. But somebody calls me up and says, do I need a permit that, you know, during thin ups and trees? And no, you don't. So. If the the issue of. The issue of. Actually creating an entrance on a on a town road is is definitely an issue that needs to be. Needs to be addressed.
Did did they get permits from the state to do those things? I assume they have.
No, they haven't, well, they're. The first one has now, because I told him he had to. That that first entrance that he put in close to the door, he couldn't get a permit. Up there, so when he's done. With the work in there, he's gonna have to discontinue that first.
I think we need to redefine driveway up here, I thought we had. But we didn't. Because I just read it and it's, it's a access road to a dwelling. But people put in driveways for all kinds of stuff, and it doesn't matter what you're putting it in for, if it's intersecting our town road and it's gonna. The point of the whole amendment we just did was to protect our town roads. So what if a business puts in a driveway? What if someone wants to clear their forty acres of timber and they put it in access room? We don't have any. Jurisdiction here because of the way driveway is defined.
Personally, I I don't think I would mess around with the definition of driveway because it's. That's. Um a a row, a a traveled way, a gravity, traveled way, accessing two lots or less. And that interplays with a whole bunch of different scenarios. It could probably be more inclined through the separate. A separate category of of a. Of a driveway entrance. Or a or a entrance to a town road. And make it a separate category.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the driveway definition does, as Gary decided, uh. Would capture everything, not just access to dwellers. It says be dedicated or access ways serving two lots or two single family dwellings or. One. Two family dwelling or lots. The way I read it, it sounds like it's not limited to dwell.
And it has implications. I don't think I would. Just to cover something else.
Yeah. Entryway onto town roads. Okay. Noted, anyways. Back to this, six buckets, and so. Back to your point about the businesses being on here. I'm just trying to capture everything that is in. Whether we call it the building code or the land use ordinance, everything that's in that ordinance. Or and or the shoreline ordinance, which has all the same stuff, but slightly expanding, so these six things are all.
But uh also they has like peers here in Florida as well, which we have a separate application.
Oh, yeah, okay, as I said, first wrap, so we could add some things.
But 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 I'm not suggesting actually that you add it, unless what you wanna get into then is you're, you have like a separate. Page, because there's, there's nice details that we have today that are the few, because the trouble of having a blank page is. That's gonna be a little tough.
So there were definitely, that's why I did, I made this just to sort of. Get a visual of what a. It's not my preference, actually, but. I was like, well, let's give it a try. But yes, Gary or whoever would have to have a separate checklist of their own that would go in the file, and the permit couldn't be this. So we'd need. A new approach, right, this would just be the initial. I'm doing something, come check me out.
But if you look at some of the, uh uh sort where they actually do new type of a comprehensive thing, I mean, what I I see it, I guess, online. Where you go in and see, and then there's this section, if it's not applicable, skip that, go on to the next section. So it's, so you can get the detail in each section, it's a perfect, and then you do have sort of an omnibus thing, it's got one. I D number for that request.
You can, but. I was trying to, I feel like we still are very much in the. Physical world when we're doing this, because Gary needs a piece of paper to go to a site. You know, so like, yeah, I can make all kinds of branch and Google forms. That would guide people depending on their answers, I tried it once with this incredibly complex, really hard, right, cuz like. It can get crazy, but. You could do that, but it just wouldn't translate well. To a physical document, so I I kind of. Included it would be better to have. Hey, something that translates well to paper, and then you can make it a fillable PDF. Online, so people can have an online option, but I don't think, I just couldn't figure out the branching, Google form would work.
Well, again, I'm just now filling out these other applications. That you you have a section which, in the bad case, you may have and have eight pages of paper. Not for one application, and good thing was where if it. Doesn't come through in the printing, but they all do translate into a printed copy. Just having it online makes it easy for those who are computer literate to to fill out.
Yeah, and we could, we could top a little, maybe separately, but. Like finding a program to do that, because Google, Google Forms, which is free and easy for me, do not print well. They print terribly, they're like super long and huge spaces between answers, so there may be some other option. Um that I just don't know about. So I'm, I'm willing to do that, I just wanna make sure whatever we come up with, it's gonna work well in the physical world too. I don't think you wanna be on a cellphone.
We need hard copy, you're absolutely.
So this is option two. This is the first thing you let me add was like a single unified form. Would that work? And then. Option two that I was exploring was a whole bunch of forms. And so here I have a driveway permit, tree removal permit, an earth moving permit, a building permit. Utilities, but why not? Um and the business permit application, so I'll pass these around, we don't have to go through them exhaustively, but I. Sort of see the example. And I haven't included, I didn't think to print out the pure, the existing ones that we have, this would be pure. Oh, I have, sorry, I'm still passing, I should have just passed the whole file. Gary, did you get the packet? So this is driveway, which we're gonna need to create anyways. Uh I'm trying to. They may not be consistent at this point, but I'm trying to create a consistent office use. Section at the bottom, and Gary added a few things, I don't know if they're all. Useful, but I thought it might be handy to know like the zone, which a lot of time the landowner doesn't know.
I like your little uh.
Andrew, when we were trying this, one thing this thing didn't have, this was, it didn't have the map and lot.
I skipped it because. I'm trying to make the form a little bit shorter. And I'm like, what, what can we find out that we don't have to ask this person for? So if they have an E nine one one address, which they are should have, if they're doing this application. All we have to do is put it into our tax app and we have the map and lot.
Yeah, but if you're looking for order in a hard copy and you go back to the files, it's sort of by mapping off.
That's true.
Uh so much of it, just doing the work with the assessing, you you go back to this.
Yeah.
Map and lot is, I think, pretty important.
A lot of the things that I took off had to do with. Could we figure it out from our records? So there's a lot that was taken out, and Gary. We could talk about that more and look at the current building. Permit form, but map a lot, yes. Um but also things like how many dwellings are on a lot, well, we know that, how many? I don't know, there are a few different things that are on the original app that I was just like, this is all great information, but we should have all this information. Do we really need to ask the landowner? The applicant to recreate it on this form? Maybe we do, I don't know.
Well, I, cuz I think that actually, there's definitely someone has to use this.
Yeah.
And and if they have to go and research the application, you know, the source.
Here's what I was picturing, Gary gets the application, it has an address. He types in the address to the tax map, oh, it's tax, but it's map, lot, whatever, he goes to the drawer, he pulls the file. Right, and now you have the file. And you go, you do your thing and your inspections or whatever, I don't know what you do, but you have all that information there. Theoretically, without having to ask the landowner to write it down. But again, I'm not highly attached either way, I would ask to make the forms a little. Shorter and like clearer and fit on a single page and easier to look at, so when I was thinking, where can I cut, that's where I went. But we don't have to.
Do we know how quickly, when you file um like an E nine one one address, how quickly it goes into the tax map?
Oh, not quickly at all, actually. So yeah, that could be a problem. I don't know, I'll ask Evan, do you know?
It's it's more of an annual cycle. So um so you get you get information, building, print stuff for both a year maybe is before it shows up.
Okay, okay, so you definitely need to.
We we really do, it's a key identifier at all the the early stages.
Yeah, it is on the driveway permit, of course, we don't have an E nine one one address at that point, but um.
It also ties back to living orders, which you got. But sometimes the the person running the project is somebody else, and maybe you've got that name and address contractors.
Yes, and. Not on the driveway permit, and again, I was working on these on different days, so they're not totally consistent, but on some of the other ones after name, it says if not property owner attached. Proof of interest in property. Work on the wording there, but sometimes. Someone who's not the owner will be applying, right, and we need some kind of proof that they have the right to do this.
Just uh to put this into context uh for us and particularly tonight. How do you, what's the decision? The adoption of forums is going to be the select board. And you want, are you looking for recommendations from us?
Yeah, essentially like. I've I've looked through these ordinances, but. A lot of you have looked at them a lot longer than me, obviously Gary has to use the things, I want feedback. And then I I guess it's the select word, I don't really know, it's just an admin process.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to slow it down or put in more work for folks, but is it the kind of thing where it would be helpful to have our? Subcommittee, two or three people to sit down and talk. Talk the truth and work it, work it through the theory. One that gave you some help.
Well. Yeah, I guess I wanted the whole board to have a chance to see it and give initial. Well, yeah, I guess I wanted the whole board to have a chance to see it and give initial thoughts. And then, um, but we don't have to all workshop it every meeting, you know?
So I know, I think it looks good. I, yeah, taking luck, um.
You like the individual or the?
I like the individual. Gary, what do you think? Is the individual too much? I just feel like it's a better checklist for people and and for you possibly.
Oh, yeah, it's, you know, I was just talking to actually look on another topic, you know, changes are. And when I pull, I've been doing this for so long, when I pull an application, now I look, okay, it's this map and lot number.
Yeah.
Is the owner, that's now it's in a limited development, just if it's two hundred and seventy feet from the wall, you know, I know where everything is. I'm just trying to get it straight in my head. If I have to look at a different form every time. It's gonna be a learning curve, you know?
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's, it's gonna be helpful or make things harder. And, I mean, it seems, uh, I guess I'm not, uh, I'm not convinced yet that it's, it's a huge benefit. I like, I like this idea of sort of, a sort of, uh, telling, uh, showing people the different categories of activities, this new permits. I'm more inclined at this point to use this as like an addendum to, to the building permanent application like others. And I haven't quite talked to me yet in zoom.
Yeah, well, yeah, let's, let's turn some time on it and kind of, but, but in terms of structuring, how we keep this going forward, uh, what's the sense of the group of people want? Two or three people to work with Gary on it, uh? I don't know if there's any more research or, you know, if you wanna look at our pounds, how they're, how they do it, that's what I'm saying.
I've been poking around. I guess I'd like you guys to have this.
Yeah.
Take some time.
Yeah.
If you wanna give me feedback, um, you know, over email or maybe at the next meeting, we can do a quick round. And I don't wanna spend so much.
Yeah.
And then after next meeting, we could just move to a subcommittee, but let's let the whole board look.
Yeah.
Give some feedback and then move on.
Yeah, I think, you know, well, sometimes, um, you know, Gary, obviously it's, it's the boots on the ground and the trenches. And there are a few things going on here. I mean, it's nice to have the on this one. But there are going to be specific pieces of information for these individual pieces of work that you, you're gonna want more information on and, um, uh, so I can, I can see both and it's just kind of a matter, how do we, how do we, uh, create a hybrid that, that works?
Yeah.
Uh, so.
Yeah, and if any of you could have sung it, the only couple of these out is an application and send them along.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's how you could do it. That's the way I try to like work through things. So when I'm like looking at them, I like try to think as if I'm building something or, you know, and work with the, through it. So that's when things come up.
But I can see somebody coming in and, you know, you've got these, you know, in different boxes on the wall. Someone said, oh, okay, yeah, I'm doing driveway.
We have like a permit rack, right?
Yeah. Pull out that.
Our website right now, just initially it said anytime you build something, get a building permit. And now that I'm more educated, I've set, changed it to anytime you use land, you have a building permit, but it still is not like, uh, clear. It would be, you know, I just feel like if, um, the, the forms, while it's like administrative and internal, it, I feel like it's also educational for the public.
Sure.
Yeah, right? Like if they have these paths, they know these are what they need.
So, so thank you. So I mean, really, really appreciate all this, all this thought, yeah, given to this.
Right. So I asked April again, you, concerns, you wanna make this feasible? You know, preparing for everybody involved. And so it tells me it's fact of how to produce the form and then the person to fill out the form and how you store the form.
Yeah.
To make it, make it again, easier to find. Um, is it, it looked like this, this is like the start of a good world. Cover sheet, yeah. I like that, I like a cover sheet. And these do look like they're the specific. So like everyone does a cover sheet and then you have more things.
I was thinking of as alternatives, but
Yeah.
you could do both.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna increase like forms if we don't have to.
One more thing is to make this a cover sheet and then have the same sheets. Have a permit number up on each sheet, so that when you go look at this, you, you automatically know this is for this particular set of permits.
Yeah. Cause one, one request could be for two or three different things.
Right.
Possibly.
Yep.
Yeah.
Exactly. But yeah, that was, when you do something new.
Yeah.
All right. Great job. Great job.
Yeah. Good, good, good. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for your help. It all thought out. Still a lot of work.
This will go, so fly once we get it going.
April, while you are on a roll, if you wanna talk about the, uh, I don't know, the, uh, uh, the change that we need to make to the, to the, uh, the ordinances that we've had.
Oh, the conditional, yes.
Whatever. You wanna talk about that a little bit?
Yes and no. Okay. So whenever we amend the shoreline zoning ordinance, we have to send it to the DEP. And they either say, this is perfect, or they say, uh, it's okay, but this is a problem. So we're gonna give you a conditional approval. Well, I was hoping we wouldn't get a conditional approval. We had, we did last year and we have a few times in the past. We got a conditional approval because, um, I missed one line. I changed one line in the, the table of land uses. Um, and because of the building code, we had added one little phrase, which was, um, commercial, uh, activity is prohibited in the resource protection district. It already said that. And we added a phrase that was all other commercial activities, see the site plan review, planning board, something like that. We were trying to add a little bit so that every business looking at that section would know what to do. If you're this kind of home occupation, you're fine. If you're this kind, you go for a permit. If you are, uh, commercial, you can't do it in this district. All other districts, site plan review. So it was like everything. And so in the table of land uses, I didn't think there was anything in there. So I was like, oh, okay, I'll just add this. Commercial and industrial, no, for the RP district. Everything else, planning board, planning board, planning board. And I made the table the same in the building code and the shoreline zoning ordinance, because it's in both ordinances. And I was trying really hard not to amend one and not amend the other, cause we could add a lot. The problem is that the shoreline zoning ordinance is, has more regulation than the building code on where you can do commercial and industrial. And so that line I put in, which is fine in the building code, um, contradicted the shoreline zoning ordinance. So everything else is perfect, but line twenty in the table of land uses, we got a conditional approval, um, which isn't a big deal. Again, we've had these a bunch in the past. All it means is usually actually in the past, they're just like, here's your conditional approval. And that's it. You're done. Like you don't get to say anything about it. Um, this time, um, the DEP said, if you want, we can put a pause on it so you can talk to your leaders and see what they wanna do, because I guess some towns, especially if you have like a council or something that can change an ordinance, they'd rather just fix that kind of conditional. I think in our case, we'd have to call a special town meeting to fix that one line. And my thinking is we're probably gonna just overhaul this, that ordinance again next June. Um, or we can just fix that one little bit next June, but I don't think it necessitates a special town meeting. So.
And then the fix is?
Well, just take out line twenty of the table of land uses. Yeah. And so.
It's already covered by fifteen.
It's already covered by line fifteen. Yes. Yep. And that's, that's it. So the select board, I'll have them vote on it at their next meeting. I would be floored if they decided they wanted a special town meeting to fix that and they tend to avoid those like the planes if they can. So.
All right. So there's really nothing for us to do other than
No, I just.
Be thinking about changing it.
Yes.
Pressing it next year.
Yeah. I wanted to make sure you knew that's what happened and yeah, if you have strong feelings about it, you could tell the select board.
All right.
I think you should have a special town meeting.
Uh, okay. Good, good, good. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
That was a part, part.
Well, no, it caught me by surprise. I could, cause I got the email last night and I.
Well, even when he explained it, oh, it's here, here and here. I went back and I'm like, I would have never. I don't know.
All right. Well, it sounds pretty denied. Uh, so, uh, I don't think we have to do anything about it, but again, um, it's obviously something we need to know. If we're in a position of applying that ordinance, uh, here between now and the next town meeting, we're obviously paid attention.
Yeah.
Break up, job. Um, okay, good. Uh, next time item I put on there was comprehensive plan. Um, and the reason I put that on there was we would have a conversation about, yeah, five hours. Very focused on it. And it occurred to me as, uh, now I'm all excited about doing a lot more work. I think so, right? Uh, that we might want to put together, uh, a working group, subcommittee to start focusing on the comprehensive plan and coming up with a, a, those hit, those are things that we wanna work on for the year. Uh, that was my idea, but I put it out on the table. And just by way of
A new company?
Visual or demonstrative exhibits. This is it.
Yeah.
Or it's chock full of things that, uh, we, the planning board are supposed to be looking at.
But have the separate funding board actions, if they're not solar board actions.
Yeah.
You know, so, uh, sorry. So that's why I wanted to put it on the table and see if there was a group of folks who wanted to get together. Uh, perhaps under Jeff's, either film.
So the context for this, cause Emily just asked, is, is that we're in the midway of a ten year time period. So you're looking to revise it in five more years, but why not start? And you started it last year. Why not start something soon? So we're not gonna, yeah.
We're, we're not only revised it, but implemented. And there were things on there that, that, uh, we were supposed to do in order to implement the comprehensive plan.
So, uh, we actually should have been doing reviews. In fact, originally, when we approved it, we shows that the planning board is gonna start looking at it again in two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty, see how we're doing. Then COVID came and we never did that. And Rich was never real excited about doing it anymore. So that's why here it is, uh, we're six years into the, we're, we're, we're past the midpoint, which is when your town is supposed to go and do a midterm review. And that's the focus on what have we gotten done? What we do, we still need to do. And what do we think wasn't worth it? Not to, not to bother. Uh, and, and so actually taking that, that what I sent out and sent out in the past, that list of actions, that's what we, we could sit down and kinda go through first and say, where are we? And, um, it actually would be nice to like someone involved conservation commission, invite conservation commission to come. And we'll talk about that section. Uh, and cause it also gives some feedback, I think of
Yeah.
what, what do we think really needs focus or, you know, it's okay. So we have successes. That's plain. We have a success. We, we actually did a water study. That was on the list. Uh, we actually got broadband, uh, you know, that was on the list.
Yeah.
We got a sister. That was on the list. So we've actually done some major things that are there, but then there's a lot of stuff we haven't.
Recycles.
Yeah, well.
Nice one. We're happening.
What?
That was to look at it, to look at.
That's a good one. That's high guys. I don't know if that's part of the topic here.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, so, so would you like the?
Yeah.
And episode?
Well, I, I mean, next step might be, um, I was just saying, next step, I want you to, to review what we've got. But I think also I'm hearing that there's something the select board wants to do.
Not sure. So I had a chance to talk to Emily Rabi today at Lincoln County Regional Park, a bunch of stuff. But I brought this up to her and just tried to get clarity on what a review is versus redoing your plan.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, I think the select board had been thinking, oh, we're gonna redo the plan. She said, you don't really need to come up with a comp plan committee for review. She said more, what you would do is you would take the plan. You would, you know, maybe assign different things to different town officials and different committees, depending on what the focus of that part of the plan is. Um, and then everyone would kind of workshop it. Get back together and sort of go through it and give feedback and come up with a, like Jeff was saying, what did you do? What do you need to do? What is no longer relevant list? And so it's just, it's more of a check in. And it involves, you know, probably involve code enforcement, the road commissioner, obviously the planning board. But like Jeff was saying, also the conservation commission. So, um, now that I've spoken with her, I'll bring that back to the slide. I'm saying, well, what we probably should do is a little more simple.
Right.
Um, another thing she said though, that's interesting, she said a new law has passed about comprehensive plans. Uh, it's still in the rulemaking process, that they don't expect it to be done until late twenty twenty six or probably twenty twenty seven. So she's advising plant, uh, towns to either hurry up and get it done before then, or aim to get it done, um, after that point. So.
Get worked on.
Uh, another conference. So we're due twenty twenty nine. Um, so we have the land well after it, if we wanna hit that date, but we should start twenty twenty nine, twenty twenty eight, she said at least eighteen months. So like halfway through twenty twenty seven.
Yeah.
Yeah. It took us about a little, little, less than two years.
And how is the comprehensive plan formed? Is it formed by the select board or is it formed by committee for this company?
Well, it, it, again, history is the, the select board appoints a committee to do it. Some, in some towns, the, the planning board may take the lead, but really true, it's best. And what they did last time was actually had a representative from each of the town committees. So that's why the history committee is a section. Um, you know, the harbor master, uh, was there for, for me resources. So there was a number of things and, and Gary had has.
Yeah. The way it works, I mean, is the salt, you know, comes to you and says, congratulations.
Yeah.
And we, and we started with, with the red representative as well. So to Jerry Bodnar was the select board.
Greetings before that.
And you know, just going back to basics, the point of a comprehensive plan is just to kind of have a direction and priorities of the town spelled out. So we are all moving hopefully in unison. Yeah.
But, but it also, I mean, there's some statute for requirements too. And, and, uh, you know, in terms of, of things that we do, ordinance wise, often a reference point is just inconsistent with.
Experience or.
Yeah.
Oh, grants.
Yeah.
So there's probably too early to determine what the new law is gonna look like, right?
I've, I've just heard about it.
The new one?
It, it was the past last session. So it's a new grant growth management law. But in terms of how that gets implemented in the direction for a comprehensive plan, that's where the state planning. But, but you can read the statute. I've actually printed off it. Cause it's in language that you gotta say, say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering if we go ahead and start making all these changes and then they make this new law, is it all for not?
No, no, we, we don't really want to. As I say, right now, we're at the stage of, what did we plan to do? Did we do it?
Yeah.
Do we still wanna do it?
Yeah.
And do we, and let's do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So basically that list that you had us go through, where we kind of picked things through, and then we kind of described why we would wanna focus on that. Remember when we did that, like the, we're like, okay, well, I like this one because this, um, is there, you, does it like the subcommittee of the planning board or whatever wanna narrow down three and or, or we, we vote on like what top three we should work on from that list? And then the subcommittee goes, works on it and then brings it back. I.
Good.
Yeah.
Might wanna let the select board just like giving it up. So I think ultimate.
Well, here's, here's my, here's my concern in that regard, and that is, um, uh, this has been around for a long time and nothing's happened, or I shouldn't say that. We as a select, we as a planning board haven't said, okay, here's our checklist of things to work on. Let's start working on, um, and I don't, uh, say this, uh, um, I don't want to, uh, have to do something that would be important because the select board didn't tell us to.
Yeah.
I think we have an independent obligation, uh, the separate board, separate statute board to be responsible for our own stuff. And we've got a lot of stuff that we're responsible for in the comprehensive plan, it seems to me. So I, you know, I, I, I certainly don't wanna, uh, butt heads with the select board, but I don't wanna feel like we have to make the permission.
Yeah. I don't think on individual items, for sure. Like there's all kinds of things that I'm supposed to be working on, but I think like the general, we're gonna, as a town, we're undertaking a comprehensive plan review.
Separate, separate issue, totally separate issue. And, and, and I'm glad you, you said it that way because from the conversation, it was clear, yeah, we're talking about, okay, planning for the next, no, it's a plan. That's totally, I. That's totally, I I don't even wanna go there unless she.
Yeah, right, well, that's true thing, there's updating your comprehensive plan, which we do once every ten years.
All right.
There's reviewing your conference plan.
Which is supposed to do for your regular.
Which is right, and so that's what we're doing, we're proposing to do. Um. I do think the select board should probably be looked in here and have, you know, be assigning it out to different groups. I think the planning board, I haven't read it. It with an eye towards who get whose section is what, but we wanna make sure we're kind of clear, like you this.
It's like the more people you include, the less likely.
Comprehensive plans, so.
Well, well.
The comprehensive plan. You know, gives us a chart, it says chapter, action strategies necessary, responsible.
Yeah.
Responsible, who's responsible for doing this?
And and I bet.
This is the planning.
A lot of people don't know that they're responsible for an action. The basic will have changed, so I think this is why my thought, the first thing, really, if we get the 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 buy in from the planning uh from the select board, we should do this.
Hmm.
That that um. We we do it with these committees, with the people, and say, hey, there's this, cause many times the planning board has another, has a parallel role with them. And sometimes like Conservation Commission, it's planning board and Conservation Commission and select.
Right, multiple.
Yeah, or responsible, but it it I I think to me, the first step is let's review this and understand it. And then we'll worry about how to divvy out to what can you ask.
Because I think the list that you have handed out to us before had all the ones that even mentioned responsible planning board. It's really like, okay, so that's the list that pertains to us, and we went down it and then we're like, okay, well, this. You know, for instance, the sidewalks making fun of, that was on, and we're like, oh, I know. But you know, safety, widening roads, well, water was on there, all that stuff that we had already been talking about. There's not, yeah.
I mean, here here's just another example, uh review and amend the site plan review board, consider. To render it more compatible to the needs of small businesses. Responsible party planning board, when is it supposed to be completed, two thousand twenty one?
Oh, my God. So.
So we have the checklist, we have the authority, we have the obligation under the plan.
So let's prioritize the list.
And be doing this.
Yeah.
And and you know, the fact that maybe other people aren't throwing it either doesn't. So much huge, right?
Cause the select board always has the option of saying like, no.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's the ordinance process, you know.
But there are also things that are like, uh yes, big uh the history committee, uh we had put in down there doing an inventory, historical researches, things on the aisle. Uh because one of the concerns, or we.
Can you see them?
You can actually start off first off with a list of goals for each year. So that's coming down from the state, this is part of, I mean, the rewrite, we're gonna get the new growth management law, what are the goals we're supposed to be trying to achieve? You know, that is a plan, well, we have goals down for each year for for the history, it was concerned about how we preserve. Things, and we talked about this, well, we've got like stone walls. What's to keep people from it, you know, gobbling up all the stones in the stone wall, we don't have a that neat thing anymore. So there's actions in there that still are not planning board. But I don't think a history committee has even thought about that part now, they have done some of the things, for example, doing inventory of cellar holes. We have that now online, that's one of the the layers in the tax maps is are where building structures were historically. So we've accomplished some things too, and so I'm gonna make some of the pitch, this is also a good time to to claim success and to pat people on the back. For the things that we actually have accomplished.
Yeah.
So at any rate, uh back to our action item, uh uh. You wanna add something as we pick up the tour or feel?
Do we wanna get sort of an okay from the select board to 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 begin the review or to start this review?
I think the comprehensive plan tells us we have, we don't.
Well, I.
It was. Yeah, yeah, it's connecting, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't really prompt review and assign this up to committees, but planning board doesn't have the authority to be like. Conservation Commission, here's your section. You know, that's more of a leadership of the town thing, the way Emily described it to me today is. You look through it, you divvy it up based on whose responsibility is, probably this table would be the guiding light for that. And then everyone does their thing, but you have milestones and deadlines, and then they all get together with all the town, the leadership, the select board, and she offered, she said I could. Facilitate this, she does it for other towns, you have a big workshop. And you go through it all and break it all down and and kind of. Universally agree on all your things that you need to accomplish.
But again, that's the second level.
That's that's.
That's later plan.
Yeah.
We're talking about implementing the one that we've got now.
Right, and it's planning board responsibilities, which we by all means, nobody looking at, but I think like. Kicking off the review and assigning it out to other parties like Jim Fromwell and Gary and Conservation Commission would be.
I I I suggest not assigning it out, so my suggestion is, this is why I do think we wanna get, if it's select word bias, let's have the review. Uh we have most of the the action items aside from select words, and we could leave there, but we should do the review with the other. Committees representatives, and that actually might mean us a separate. I mean, this is, so this is, this is my pitch.
I just, I just see that getting all muddled up because, you know. We can, we control what we do, we can't control what other people do, and and I think if anything, by, you know. Saying, hey, we're serious about this and and we advertise that, and we do it for the select board. And maybe that'll say, oh, maybe we should be like this, they probably don't even.
No, I think nine times out of ten, they don't know because it hasn't been part of on the radar.
But the objective, I think, is to uh look at what we're responsible for, start. To the extent we pick two or three things that we wanna work on to do, we do it. And we don't need to ask for permission, we obviously we tell the select board what we're doing if we want to.
I also think part of the success of 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 the preparation of an excellent cop was based on. The committee's relationships with these other groups, so we're not talking about. Telling them what to do, but reengaging them.
Hmm.
Um so.
But again, it's not a group effort, but this is the planning board's responsibility to come up with that new order, so if that's what we decided.
That piece.
Individual items in here that are assigned to the board are hundred percent ours.
That's right.
And we can focus on them and make moves on them as we need to.
That's right.
But the townwide effort of reviewing the whole comprehensive plan.
Separate issue.
Separate. We can't, we can't just do that, though, putting in the select, the select board needs to kind of.
Yeah, we're not, we're not even, that's not even on the agenda.
Okay, but 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 wait a minute, I I I. I am, so we have, cause I think we have a backward looking effort to review where we stand.
Yep.
And the select board originally was gonna, I mean, the uh select board. Five years ago, six years ago, said that would, the planning board would take the lead on. For the whole of the of the of the comprehensive plan. Not just our own stuff.
All right, well, that's that's now a third level, okay, the first level is. We view what we're supposed to do and check them on.
Mm hmm.
Second level is. We as a planning board have a townwide responsibility. To the comprehensive plan process to review what everybody's done or hasn't done. And then do something with our. The third level is in anticipation of creating a new plan. Here's the process we do, I'm just talking about level one. Checking off our side, we're good, no, that's.
We can, we can just do planning board, but but I think.
If if we want, yeah, okay, and here's, I guess, if I think our bandwidth is is. Uh we've got so many days and so many hours. Uh I think it would be accomplishing as much as we can to pick out two or three or four of these items and do them. If the select board wants us to review town one. And collectively work with other groups to assess how successful we've been, I mean, that's a another form of other. Item, but and and I don't disagree as a group that that may be a select board led effort. But in terms of us and our our little pupil here and doing our homework, what we're supposed to do. That's all I'm suggesting to focus on, isn't it?
Well, at least that's a place to start. Um uh so so great, yeah, I mean, uh to do at least to get some review done, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't want us, I don't want. My my opinion is. We will be much more effective and much more, add much more value to what's going on in town. If we work through our checklist rather than trying to do a townwide review or style we're doing town one. Even though that may be one of the charges, but I think that's more the select for.
Yeah, and I could speak for the slot for sure, interested in revisiting the comprehensive plan, they weren't really sure how we do it at this midpoint.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons I was talking to Emily, was to get a little clarity on that for them. And so she laid out this whole review process, it's a townwide process, or blah, 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 so like, yes, we should focus on our thing, but there should also be a townwide review. The select board will probably, I'll take this back to them, they'll probably talk about it at their next meeting and maybe pick it off over the winter, Emily was saying a good schedule would be. Fall into maybe like January, February. Is when you try to like come to bring everyone together and have your conclusions to that review and sort of your marching orders, but. Each of us individually, we've focused on our own parts of the plan, so that's.
That that sounds kind of what we we originally talked about them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but again, at that time, select word wanted the planning board to lead. We don't have to do that.
Oh, I see.
It's it's still, it's still.
And they may still, I don't know, they just were at the point of like, we need to revisit the comprehensive plan, let's figure out how to do that. Who knows how they'll wanna proceed?
But but it's it's really decisive, how are we doing?
Yeah.
And it's really, if we're not getting some stuff down that we should be. Then let's get get that rule that says, but from the comprehensive stand, plan standpoint, it's not just the funding business. And if you look at a number of the things there, like the planning board, it's not just alone, so we're gonna have to work to somebody else.
I mean, it's, there's a, there's a lot, lot going on there, and a lot of other folks involved. But here's the question to you guys, that we hit this around. Uh uh. Do we want as a board to start going down our list and. And identifying a handful of things we think we have time to handle, to try to. Do what the plan told us we did. Or. Do we want to forget about that, talk about uh uh a more townwide. Uh assessment evaluation, how successful we've town and other committees have been in checking off that first.
Number one.
I I think we we can go ahead and work on it.
Yeah, I think we can spearhead like revisit, going down the list, saying what we all think is most important, coming to consensus consensus on that and spearheading three.
Well, yeah, okay.
I think that's a good life start of the fiscal year activity, you know, as top layer review. What's your stuff, did you get it done, what are you gonna work on?
Yeah.
And.
Cause we haven't really had a, uh we talked about last year about things we wanted to do.
Yeah.
This would help us ground them.
Yeah, and that's why I, that's why I'm suggesting, but it's just a suggestion. Is if we have have a two or three people who who make the cut at it. Come to uh the board our next meeting and say, okay, here are three or four things we recommend to work.
There's like each of us to be able to look at the at the list, so.
But it's it's not half. Right, that's not half.
Well, we never had scheduled it to do this.
It's a little bit here.
This is better, the first time we've discussed it as assignments and that sort of thing.
Well, I tried.
We've been the list before, I think, I mean, like. A a lot of the thing, the comprehensive, and let's just revisit it again and then come to consensus of like three to spearhead. And then if there's only a couple of people, we can really work on that.
Okay, so the homework assigned.
Yeah, yes, I already have mine in my head.
Good, and this, and I think, did you do this, or? Is this what you said, cause I.
I I I sent out something that this was the.
This is the checklist that.
We we put together a package that has the intro, it's an interesting, and then you have the goals, this and getting into the strategies.
Okay, well, it's in the plan, and I I think I've excerpt excerpted those sections here, so happy to send these around, but. Uh otherwise, homework item.
Big.
One thing would be helpful to those of us who haven't been on the planning board. I'm so I don't even know if some of the items on this list have already been done.
That's why I did it review.
Yeah.
I wanted to actually.
I wanna know what's been done.
What's the success, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Feels good to knock it on the.
That's part of the process, you know, individually, and then with the subcommittee is. You know, picking out the ones that, and patting ourselves on the back, make sure we letter.
And then.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, cool, cool, all right, well, then we'll we'll put that on on the uh gender for next week, next month.
Okay.
And uh.
Yeah, okay, reality check, I'll I'll be coming, join anybody. I think so, I suppose one of them camping or not.
All right, well, send us your list.
Well, I'm also gonna be camping in Utah the next reading, so I will not even be able to do it till.
Well, send.
And it's a camping one, really?
Well, that's the deadline, uh that's the deadline, you can get something in the next.
We can exchange emails.
Yeah, send, send, send emails out before you guys uh head out.
That helps, so I sent you.
Next couple of weeks.
Man, look at this.
Yeah, please, please.
Sent you like a.
Okay. Water study.
Well, good, so better, good, I I, so I think it's helpful to know where we will be standing, what happened.
Yes.
Uh I would love to do maybe a little short session that. We'd have to notice because it could be more than.
So before you head out?
Before I head out to actually talk about where we stand.
Oh, you wanna do a special meeting?
Yeah, you're gonna do a workshop.
We could do a workshop.
Let's spearhead the report, you know?
But also, so everyone knows what.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, where we stand, and then you can say, what's left, what do we need to do?
Yeah.
When do you wanna do it?
And then.
I'm all about.
When are you leaving?
Twenty first.
The first.
The first of.
September, yeah.
Okay, pretty much, well, we could.
Yeah, we can. Actually, I could attend on Zoom, you know, um just not in person after the twenty first, so if that's, don't get me stopped.
Will this be available for the first? Uh yeah, I think I think this is out, I think you've got this in your email.
Yeah, it's really cool to read like what people.
I sent it out. When did you send it out?
Today.
Oh, I haven't, I haven't, I access to my email.
Well, you sent that out today.
Yeah, but like, I don't know exactly, is it, is this something that you printed that I sent out, or is this?
I think I.
No, yours was just a a landscape list.
Yeah.
Of just, it didn't have that in the front, it was just like.
What I sent out today?
You sent it out, you gave it to us before.
Well, I know, this is something else I sent out today.
Oh, no.
It does, it's this.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's basically the front part of the comprehensive plan, telling you what it's about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then it gets into the goals, in into the strategies and actions.
Yeah.
So it actually is more than I gave you before.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so why? He gave us the why, basically.
Okay, well.
If there was the action plans that we got before, but you're saying you gave us the the kind of why.
The why, and 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 a complete thing, but that's not just the findings.
Right.
You wanna do a.
Good dates for you.
Uh best things are usually Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Uh yes.
So we.
For everybody, what you want to do.
Come up with a date.
Okay.
Tuesday, the nineteenth is open on the town calendar. Um.
Tuesday, the night of which month?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, so less, less than a week from today.
That could be a little tight for some folks.
Yeah.
Next Thursday.
How about the twenty sixth, if they're available?
Um.
July, July.
The day is that?
Wednesday, Tuesday. I can attend, yes, um let's see, Tuesday, twenty sixth on the town calendar, looks.
I can do next, I can do the twenty sixth, yeah.
That looks great.
Do the twenty sixth. Well, I I know next week, I don't know the forecast, so I need to go check.
No, 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 yeah, we need you there, we need you there, so.
We can't do it without you, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Look, that next week is out of.
First, we need to watch out for next time we write one of these.
So the.
Twenty six.
Yeah.
Twenty five, twenty six, they made both, yeah.
Okay, okay.
But I hate to be the the, so I can do the twenty sixth. Uh I can do um. Other other days of the week too, not just Tuesdays and Thursdays, but it depends which ones.
So the twenty seventh?
That's, I don't see.
The twenty sixth. Does that?
Well, I think.
It works for me.
It wasn't gonna work for a couple of people, so.
Not gonna work for me.
Uh. So the twenty seventh, Jeff?
So the twenty seventh, Jeff?
The only companies that it it, if we did it at 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 six thirty, because we've got the uh, friends meeting.
I can't keep up, not keep up.
That's why I can't do this.
And also the fire department training.
Yeah, I I, but I'm missing it tonight too, so.
Yeah. But would six thirty work on Wednesday for you guys, for Nick and and Dip?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's okay with me.
So how how does that work for you with your?
Yeah, yeah, six, six thirty on the.
Twenty seven?
Or the twenty seventh?
Well, because it the didn't, the twenty sixth didn't work for a couple of the.
Gotcha, okay, that sounds good.
So you take, you get what that that package you sent out, it is is more there than you need, but you can kind of go through and. And and look at the background, but you can look at the ones that are identified as planning board. Uh, and we can talk about just what, where things got done.
Six thirty on the twenty seventh.
Yep, I will put out a notice.
Thank you, thank you.
So. So on the twenty seventh, we're gonna come up with our list with three or four things.
Now, that review meeting.
Okay, okay, cool. Uh, I just received the email from uh, Mr. Ms. Waddle. Kelly Waddle, and uh, he sent the uh, digital list on. Going to, oh, I'm good, so, uh, email that to all of you. Okay. All right, uh, all right, good deal, great job. Water study, um. So, uh, it sounds like there've been some updates, April, could you renew those for us again?
Yeah, so we just heard back from Carol, the hydrologist, she's gonna come September fourth. Uh, I believe around six to do a presentation at the town hall, I gotta nail down the details, but. Uh, that's the date she gave us, and I think that worked fine for the town calendar, so that's exciting. I'll send out a newsletter, the monthly newsletter on Friday. Um, and in that I'll link to the water report, so now it'll be out in the public. But we've also given them this event to come to, if they have questions, or to send their questions in, so we can submit them to Carol at that time. And then the select board's thought for after that is to have a series of workshops about water usage, um. Something about septic, which maybe Gary could talk about, um, something about. Pollution and how not to mess up the water table, I'm just here, I don't really know. But, you know, a series of workshops focused on specific things that could maybe eventually be put into some kind of. Uh, written material that's a resource for people. Uh, and then, you know, sort of do that for a while and then turn to, how do we work this into the ordinances? Based on the fact that we get, as we do those things.
Yeah.
Will the conservation commission be presenting along with Carol, who's super smart, and obviously has done the report? Not really, they wanted Carol to just really as the expert lead it, because they want. They were really keen to get sort of a neutral voice from out of town, almost, you know? Because this may affect people's property, and it's touchy, and they just want someone who's. The brilliant expert from out of town to speak to it, because if somebody's is very involved or has whatever. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
So will this be more ma- new material from last presentation, or will this be more the same?
Sure, then I can go to the last presentation.
Yeah.
Port which hasn't been out.
Yeah, so here are the two, um, final comments, uh, and I'll email these to everybody. One is the final study. Uh, which, uh, has lots of absence and back and, uh, a chart. Uh, on. Various options for what to do that. The second item is, uh, really kind of fun online. Uh, they'll be, they'll be getting a, a link. Uh, and it's interactive, so you can click on things to get more information. You can click on things to zero, to zoom the map in on a particular area.
Yeah.
I turned it off and it says, you know, push this button to get information. Which obviously, it's not helpful, but, uh, I did turn it off just, you know, uh. As a, as a workshop reference. These are the two, as I understand it from going through the, all the emails that went back and forth. These are the two final products, uh, that would be, sounds like they're gonna be posted on the town website.
I believe so, so the part, the flatboard said, when you send out your newsletter, link to the study, so I was thinking that final, final product. Because we had this preliminary product and then the April, the one that came to us in April. Well, they're. They're different though, you're saying, and like.
Absolutely, this, this is the report and it, it has the December twenty four date on it, but it wasn't finalized until March. And this is the final March copy.
I see.
And and this was, uh, intended to be more of a user friendly, and the way, the way I saw this is I went through it. And I haven't done the interactive completely, but was, this was her presentation initially. And my guess is when she makes the presentation in September, it's going to be used in this, because it's more. It's more user friendly and it's.
No.
Right. It might link to both, let me just go back to the slackboard and find out what they meant when they said that to me, I wanna, I don't wanna speak for them, but.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send them both to you.
Yeah.
Um, and I know I, I've got the emails that, that were covered emails to this, for saying, hey, this is a fine report. This, this is, she calls this her, uh, uh, knife. So didn't write it down here, but she called us her, not the plan, but map, I think it was something map. So, um, so at any rate, they're tremendous products and they're, and a lot of stuff, you know, um. What you all will be interested in, uh, is the planning board is at the end of the report. Uh, she has a list of options, uh.
Strategies.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, good, actually, you you brought it.
Well, I think we talked about it, yeah, yeah.
So, um, just to kind of work. Give you the teaser here, one of these charts is education and outreach, uh, projection. Groundwater protection strategies, and she's got a list of things to be done. Best practices, advisor, only groundwater protection strategy. Data collection and assessment, groundwater protection strategies. Local regulation and ordinances, groundwater protection strategies. Uh, so, uh. I think, no, for my, no, from my two cents for, um, is, uh. We have an opportunity as land versus the planning board, uh, to immerse ourselves in this and be. Resources for the community as to how all of this applies to. So, so I guess what I'm saying is, we gotta be experts, uh, we gotta know this stuff as well as anybody else in the island. So that we can talk intelligently about, uh, uh, what options. Uh, or talk intelligently about the options, because my view again is, you know, we get way at this all, I don't think everybody. Has the same level or as much as we can, the same level of understanding about what's in the air. And then we start talking about what do we wanna do with, uh, one answer is we don't do anything. There's no problem, uh, we don't need to do any, uh, and then it goes from there. And again, personally, what I'd like to see at at the end of the day is a, uh. Uh, I have a volunteer. Effort, voluntary program, I talked about the children, so we're about it. Uh, uh, not required, uh, government regulation, not ordinance, but a volunteer effort to. Um, do some of the these things here and and invite people to participate, if they don't wanna participate. They don't participate, but my sense is that, you know, for example, I would love to be in a program where. Collectively, a bunch of people, uh, uh, put this only in the pot and every year they have a. An inspection of their water, uh, water mechanics, testing water. Uh, the same thing with the septic, septic system, it's not required, it's volunteer. Uh, but we save money by having a group of people do it as opposed to doing it individual. And it's something that once it becomes routine, it's not something I have to think about every year. Uh, it's just, it's just automatic stuff. And the information that it generates is, is my information, I do whatever I want to. So I see that as something that could be beneficial, uh, it would be, uh, risk averse and. It's not something that people are going to feel is an imposition.
So how does that program work? So you put money into.
Yeah, so it'd be just, it'd just be like you, you know, all of us around the table say, hey, let's do this, let's hire somebody to. Look at our wells and our septic system once you.
Just have that done, by the way, it's very interesting.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 because there's ten of us, it's gonna cost a hundred bucks instead of a thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Uh, and then I'll go from there, I think, you know, my, my. Uh, senses that if something like that caught on, then all of a sudden. You know, most of the time it's hard, just because it's a convenient thing to do, and then, you know, uh, we work it from there. So there, but that's my two cents for it, but this is very exciting to hear, this is very, this is very huge, yeah. And, uh.
I think it's like important. We have so many people move here, especially now that they're not from rural communities, not used to. Where it wells or septic, and they have no idea.
Yeah, well, it's like, it's like the gentleman that, you know, that sent that email about his concern about, of the subdivision next door to him. Uh, you know, he said, well, will she feed off of the same aquifer? You know, a lot of people think there's a, you know, pot of water on the island that everybody drinks from.
Yeah.
Uh, and they don't realize that there ain't something, well, aquifer, it's just the cracks, cracks is on, you know, you drive down the highway and you see the cut. And those channels in the rocks, and it's probably been a lot.
Yeah.
Uh, and so once, once people understand some of the, some of the fundamentals, uh. Then they start thinking about both favor and peace that, that's interesting, so, um. How do we protect our water quality and our water quantity, uh, and.
I think it'll land back in the planning board's lap in a, yeah, important way. You know, they'll do the presentation, they'll do workshops, there'll be some kind of written material that comes out of it. They've talked about maybe following that up with a survey, you know, how do people feel about this, and then we can start. Looking at the ordinances, I don't know if we can get it done by next June, I would like to, but if not.
I drafted something already that I think kills two birds with one stone, to be honest. Uh, I sent it to you earlier and it's about block coverage, and had to do with people's problems with that big black building. And with us being a single, uh, you know, source aquifer, which means that we rely on. The water making its way back into the ground.
Well, as Carol said.
Right.
I mean, uh, the whole island, it's the island. So whatever happens down here.
Yeah.
Who knows, but could very well end up over here, um.
And I feel like block coverage isn't as triggering as changing lot sizes. Um, and I think from talking to a lot of islanders that were upset about the big black building. And me being like, well, well within the parameters of what we allow, you know, and then them being shocked about that. Looking at other communities that we find ourselves adjacent to and seeing what their lot coverage is, and then also including. You know, lot coverage includes decks, driveways, paved driveways, it's, it really is talking about. What is a permeable surface that the rain can make back way? And so we're hitting two things, is is, you know, limiting. Dense development and then also allowing the water to recharge back into the ground.
Yeah, yeah, once people start talking about it, it just becomes.
Pause.
Maybe just to think about this, I've.
Yeah, I mean.
Can't be anything but good.
The slackboard wants to try to carefully and make sure there's education and then there's support for the concept. I, I kind of feel like there's support for the concept already, like everyone I talk to is like, we gotta protect the water, so I feel like. Next June is not too soon to start thinking about what can we do with our ordinances. Based on the water study and maybe float some of that, I think the slackboard's a little like more careful than what I feel, but.
I could involve these kinds of things before and I, my sense of it is about a two-year deal, but, you know, I could be wrong. You know, if we get to a point where we're ready to make some decisions in a year, that's, I'm fine too, but. But, you know, it's, it's gonna take a while for people to, you know, absorb this, uh, talk about it, think about it, and. Get a consensus of what the community wants to do.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be interesting if we do a survey, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's great.
People hungry for it, or do they want us to leave them alone?
Okay, well, good, good, that's exciting, exciting news, uh, so our, our action point on this is, uh. I'm experts.
We're kind of in a drought right now, right?
Yeah.
Yes, we are. I was like surprised, we, because we have a fifty-year-old well, we need a new casing, it was like.
Oh.
Just. And we have a fifty-year-old well pump, but it's still producing the same it did fifty years ago when in the middle of the drought, so. And there's like different, it's cool to see, and then you need to well test at different times. Is there certain things that we were trying to look for because of the way our water smelled, it's like, well, you need rain. To to show you that, so, and we don't have that right now, but at least we know that it's not, you know, so there, it's different timing. During the year too, and I don't know, just for your well, like, yeah, pulling together for that.
If they explain.
If you ever need a good well guy, let me know.
If they explain to you what the process is to do, if the replacement of that well casing.
Oh, yeah, uh, well, we're not replacing the complete casing, it's just the, I believe, the top.
Oh, the top.
Yeah, and then we're, we're getting a new pump, because it's fifty years old and hasn't given us any problems yet, so, yeah, but.
So what, uh, just to cap this off on the water state, what I, what I may do. Right, uh, is when we have our meetings, is devote, you know, ten fifteen minutes to just. Uh, talking about what folks found, the simplest thing, you know, just kind of, uh, review its kind of pollinator. Getting to themselves, uh, things that we're find interesting here or may have questions about, I've talked through it. Okay, um, update on the proper road, I put that down, but I don't think, there's probably nothing more other than the fire.
What happened? There was, I heard there was a fire when we were away.
There was.
And then.
You were, although you, but because.
My dad was there.
Yeah, and Finn, Finn came back and was working the drill. Uh, yeah, it was, it was a brush fire, we think it was, um, they had been from burning the night, the day before, maybe just flared up. The next day, it wasn't fully out, um, so it's, it was interesting.
Yeah.
But not, not that major, it took us about two hours, I think, to get it put out.
But one of the trees got fired, it was up on the tree top, right?
Well, yeah, but they had, they, they, we had cut that tree down.
Yeah.
Cause yeah, it was quite, just not, we couldn't quite reach the top, you know, in hours. Um, but kind of the tree now works, and it wasn't gonna survive anyway. And the tree down with the top on fire, right? But like, sure see the blame of the, you can get a.
Yeah, any, any more on that in terms of what.
I haven't been down there recently, but.
I saw them pull out with the machine today, actually. Yep, at eleven, so I know it wasn't like just pulling out the machine in the morning, I was like, God damn it. I'm like, stop lying. Oh, go ahead.
What's the difference between property owned by a commercial entity? And a commercial property? I'm confused, because like if you look at the tax card, it's owned by the company.
Was it BMC?
Yeah, BMC died, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if, if I had a corporation and I bought a property, which is where I live, it's owned by the corporation. Do that for. But, yeah, but, uh, but it's my home.
Okay, so we have, we have to determine whether something's commercial based on use, usage. So we have to like spy on them to figure out if it's commercial, it feels awkward, I just wish there was a. We're recording, everybody.
Cause you have a lot of LLCs, people have set LLCs to a broad.
Yeah.
Uh, but.
And all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, but it really is, it's all, no, it's used.
Tricky.
You had a property that you kind of had an eye on.
Yeah, I forwarded you, it's the, um, one on, it went for sale to brokers only. For, what was it, close to four million dollars? Um, but my, my question of that was not that, you know, could they improve the property, of course, anybody can. But because there's, it within the seventy-five foot setback of the shoreline zone, they certainly improved it fifty percent beyond. The value of nineteen, nineteen fifty, you know, shack. To what we saw on the, I don't know if you saw, but I forwarded, yeah, it's got, you know, tripane windows, it's like lifespan everywhere. New metal roofs, it had updated electrical service, I mean, that in itself is.
So this is a potential violation of the ordinances.
Is what I'm saying, and I went to the town because with our taxes increasing. There's just a general problem with how our properties are being assessed right now, and to be quite honest, like. People are paying in the interior and, you know, like peoples whose houses aren't. Shouldn't be as taxed as much, are paying the lion's share of what certain other property owners should be paying, because the assessment is way behind. And uh, I'm talking to Ashley, even if we wanted to, because we're behind on assessments, they couldn't even. They couldn't even assess them higher if they wanted to, we can't even ass- we can't assess a property higher than a million dollars right now. When we have multiple properties above a million dollars on market.
I think we.
Well, I think we do have, I don't know why.
Well, so for something, some reason, when I was talking to her, and maybe she's still over there, but she was saying, you know, even if. The assessor, she they put everything they could on there, it like only got to a million dollars or something.
Oh, like it didn't raise our um.
Like we have a threshold.
There's there's criteria that that they have to fill out and there's a kind of standard that was set up in two thousand two thousand fourteen when they did the assessment. So it still has to meet those, what what you measured, what you what you counted. But I didn't think there's like a dollar limit, it may, but I I agree, my complaint before was that we had properties that were. Uh building costs were in in the millions, but it was difficult to from the assessment criteria.
To get there.
But there's no, it's not like dollar limit, it's more how to.
Yeah, it's something weird about the the way it calculates.
Yep.
Okay, tax issue, but.
Yes, but anyways, back onto the land use.
Just just to clarify, I don't think Emily is saying that she thinks that maybe it should be a violation of our land use. If you're not changing the footprint and you're not changing the volume, if you're just renovating the existing structure. You don't need a permit.
I'm not saying it's a violation of our land use, I'm saying it's a violation of the shoreline zone. Because they are in the shoreline zone and increased. Okay, so it is this section.
Gary's saying is if it's not new construction and larger.
So you're looking at the fifty percent uh exclusion clause, so what he had saying is that. If you have a non-conforming structure and you plan a renovation. If you reduce the value of that structure as it exists by fifty percent, then you have to come to the planning board. And have you reviewed under relocation, that's not saying that if you've got a hundred thousand dollar cabin, then you can't. You put new windows and new roof on and make it a three hundred thousand nine can be smiling at some.
So the way I read it, it's the mandatory shoreline zoning act. Any substantial improvement defined as exceeding fifty percent of the market value within the setback must undergo. Greatest practical extent review as you can, and then I said, yeah, you can see the structures are in seventy-five, so. This is a quote, any substantial improvement defined as exceeding fifty percent of the market value within the setback. Must undergo greatest practical extent.
Where are you reading that from?
That's under mandatory shoreline zoning act thirty-eight M R S three, four, three, eight, eight.
I don't think that's the text.
All right, well, it's it's getting late, but let's let's pursue that because uh at least get an answer to it, um. So uh we put it on the table.
Okay. And look at it under shoreline ordinance.
Yeah, let's maybe exchange some emails and then uh. If it's an issue, let's put it back.
One of the small, small.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Whatever.
Go ahead.
So so I know this is gonna be exciting, so so we've heard about the whatever the other state laws that are gonna be changed, but there's. Also three new pieces that have to do with affordable housing. And and again, um um they have to, this state has to set up rules, so they're not likely to be adopted until January, and they have some. Rulemaking listening sessions, which I know we all, I'm sorry that we've missed a couple of them, but but uh so like. The two of them is this week and one next week, and they're gonna be recorded, so I can email this around to you, but. Um a- again, I barely understand L D two thousand and three, and now they adopted some new. Again, I don't know how this is all gonna shake out, but in terms of housing, we should be, we should be at least alert to to what the state is gonna be proposing.
So Emily did bring this up to me today, because I said, oh, I have planning board tonight, she said, oh, okay, well, if L D eighteen. Tell everyone not to panic, um she said, you, there's listening sessions, you can come to them, but. Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission is tracking this for the towns, and when it's like time, they will be ready to help us. And she said essentially, you you're gonna just be making minor amendments to what we already passed for L D two thousand and three, they're just kind of tweaking L D two thousand and three. So we don't have to freak out yet.
You don't want to be surprised, yeah, about about the stuff, so.
We knew that was gonna happen though, right?
But they've been reporting it, actually, some of their their news that comes out from the planning.
Just one other thing, real fascinating rulemaking listening sessions, we don't want them to.
Well, true, true, um April, there uh used to be over two years of uh the uh law firm Jensen and. Whatever, in Portland, needs to do a session on uh for for planning board to select boards on. What came out of the last session?
Yeah.
And it's usually going in September, so hear anything about that?
No, Pete, so Jensen Baird.
Because that that was, I found it helpful, I think. Uh Gary's gone to those things too.
Okay, I'll save you a free meal. Great meeting, waited a little bit longer than I thought, but uh I thought it was a really good, like, guys. Welcome to a German.
No, so it's.
And you have to be really careful. Especially um doing on plan, because when you're when you're following regulations, especially with people. You have to, you have to work legally allowed to enforce, it's what we have in my.
Right.
So you can't just go grab any stuff.
No, yeah, I I. Well, I thought I pulled that from a state website, so. Oh, so it could be a state?
When we're enforcing our regulations on applications, the only thing we can enforce is our ordinance.
So. So it's not from the D E P website, but it's from our ordinance? Yeah, the D well, the D E P reviews our shoreline zoning ordinance to make sure it lines up with state law, that's why I got a conditional approval. Um so if that is.
Well, the shoreline zoning ordinance is mandated by the state and so uh if there's a state statute that says. This is what needs to be there, if you don't have it there, then we've got a problem.
But we just had it reviewed, so.
Yeah, so let's let's send me send me the site that you have and we'll look at a little bit more, but I. And I'm sure there's an answer here for, let's sort it out.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's not leave ourselves confused about it.
Yeah, we're not gonna read it here in the next ten minutes. Uh but it's it's an important issue, I mean.
Revales, the revale's coming up, so that's gonna.
All right.
And we need, we probably need, I don't know.
Two years away from getting our tax bills.
Yeah.
I sent the digital copy for the for the uh.
The lowest point?
Yes, thank you, for the doc, so you all should have that if you don't, I don't know, uh I always send it. Uh I asked him again for dates, uh and it what weekend worked for them. Uh I haven't heard back, so as soon as I do, I'll tell him, if he has some preferences, I said. How can you do any weekend?
Yeah, just I, because we still have daylight, could you do like a seven P M?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good point, I could do it.
Yeah, because that might be possible again, I'll send this one week.
Let's, yeah, let me see what he says, I'll have some conversation with him, but I'll suggest that too.
At least do that uh in summer time.
So we had a motion adhered in a second, did we vote on that? Did I stop recording it?
Let's vote with our feet, all in favor.
All right.
All right, see everybody.